Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Torres and on behalf of the city of Bridgeport, I welcome you to the swearing in ceremony of the recently selected officials for city council, sheriff, and board of education. All right, let the festivities begin. How about a hand for the Bridgeport Fire, Police, Honor Guards, and the Back Piper Raymond At this time, I would like to welcome Reverend David Miller for tonight's opening prayer.
Let us pray. All eyes and never last in eternal God. We lift our hearts, lift our hearts this evening in a very special way. This day has never happened before in such a times such as these, where we were lost without faith. But because we have assembled ourselves here to recognize the leaders of this community and those that God, we believe, has appointed for this time. So we pray for them and their family and we ask God that you would bless us this evening in such a way that we will never forget this night. Bless us and keep us and we shall be kept and we shall be blessed. Everyone under the sound of my voice, bless their children and their children's children and the family at whole. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Now, I'd like to present the Klein Theater Arts Staff and Students for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well done. Now, let's welcome Rita Marie Vajashastri for the singing of the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wow, great job Rita. How about a hand for the Klein Theater Arts and Staff students? Nice job. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Pastor Yolanda Hernandez, who will provide tonight's invocation.
Let us just come before the Lord tonight and say, dear heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus, asking that your presence be with us in this ceremony, that everyone here understands that we cannot accomplish anything without you as our guide and as our strength. We thank you for permitting us to come together tonight and rejoice alongside the city council, the city sheriffs, and the board of education, members that will go forward putting their sincere hearts in the position to which you are permitting them to work in, this city as they swear in today. For such a time as this, you have lifted and prepared each one of them, that they know above all that it wasn't because of their knowledge or strength, but your will. As each of them assume their new responsibility to lead our city, we ask that they all may be empowered to bear the responsibility of leadership with utmost integrity, courage, and humility, that we always see in them dedication to serve as they see in us the willingness to give them support and prayers. Father, permit that each day they wake up, that they be inspired with courage, wisdom, and compassion to be able to stand in solidarity with the needy and the poor, defeating prejudice and unifying our city. May they be guided to know and to do what is right, to challenge and defy anything, anything at all, that would diminish justice in this city. Father, tonight I pray that we could all view this time as an invitation to move forward with purpose and intention, to continue striving to make our city safe and that our children, the generation that is coming behind us, get the proper respect as the board of education meet to look for their well-being and education, and knowing that the only way we can become enlightened is by lifting the lives of people around us and healing our families and community. Lastly, I ask, Father, that the intentions be sincere, the labor be with compassion, and that this city becomes a shining example for all to follow. Amen.
All right. Thank you Pastor Yolanda, very pointed words. All right, at this time, I'd like to introduce some special guests who are among us, and if, when I call your name, please stand so you be recognized. First, our Lieutenant Governor Susan Beisowitz, how about a hand for her? Mayor of Bridgeport, Joseph P. Ganam. State Senator Marilyn Moore. State Senator Dennis Bradley. State Representative Stephen Stastrom. State Representative Christopher Rosario. State Representative Antonio Felipe. City Clerk Lydia Martinez. The Honorable Judge Eddie Rodriguez. The Honorable Christopher Caruso, former state rep. Former longtime city council president Tom McCarthy. Our Fire Chief Lance Edwards. And last but not least, President Pro Tempero of Connecticut State Senate, Senator Martin Looney is in the house. And I do want to say, apologize if I missed any special guests. If you're here and I didn't mention your name, please stand. Anybody? You all should be standing, you're all special guests. Come on now. That was your chance for an applause. How about applause for all our guests here tonight? All right. At this time, please welcome the mayor of the city of Bridgeport for his welcoming remarks.
John, to you for being our distinguished master ceremonies tonight, and to the Klein for hosting us, giving us the room under these difficult conditions of trying to get together but maintain space. Let's give a round of applause. Thank you for being here for our emcee. Thank the Klein for this beautiful space and all that have come to participate, to be a part of another great day, the swearing in of so many individuals today for the next two years. Mayor, city clerk, town clerk, we have the four-year terms, but everybody else on the city side has a two-year term. So it's our pleasure and our honor, Lydia and Donald, to join and to join the swearing in after elections. It's kind of with, first of all, before I say that, I want to welcome, as John did, a number of distinguished guests, especially your emcee, but his honored Judge Rodriguez has participated as an emcee in the past and is here tonight. I want to welcome him again, Judge Rodriguez. Thank him for being here for all he does. Our President Pro Tempero of the Senate, who works so hard in leadership along with our senators Marilyn and Dennis. Senator, thank you for you. And of course, she presides over the state senate, our lieutenant governor, and has been, continues to be a strong friend and a strong leader for our state, Lieutenant Governor Susan Beisowitz. Thank you as well for being here, for making this event even more special for the individuals just swearing in, but for us collectively. But it's a little bit with a heavy heart that we stand here. I was just touching base with our council president, and I think it's the first time in the city's history that we're swearing in certainly all these offices, but only nineteen members of the city council. And two days ago, Yvette Brantley was laid to rest, and I know that there was a lot of strong feelings about her lifetime contribution as a public servant, as a social worker, as a family member. And so we do it with a little bit of a heavy heart as today passes. She graces the back cover of the program, so hopefully you'll take a look at that, some of the pictures that are there in her memory. And so we do it though, I think, I'd like to take her as an example, and I think the last time we lost an elected official in the city of Bridgeport that I can remember, and I apologize if I missed, was Alvin Penn, when Alvin died in office. And so, you know, these are people that dedicated and then ultimately passed, doing what they do and hopefully what we do, this government that's being sworn in today on a local level in partnership with the state and our friends elsewhere, to try and make the quality of life in the city that we live, the city that we love, a little bit better for ourselves, our family, and leave it in a little better shape for our children. And I think probably more today than at any other point in time that I can think of in my on and off thirty years in public service, do we have that opportunity. With this new collective group of elected officials on a local level, the partnership that we have with leadership on the state level, the support that we've seen with the American Rescue Plan, and now with infrastructure bills on a federal level to support some of the needs that we have in this city, I look forward with great optimism for the people of the city of Bridgeport and beyond for the next two years. And I do it because of all that, but I do it especially because of the people that you've elected that are on the stage with me and with us tonight. And there are going to be some not-so-easy roads as we kind of ride up and down through this pandemic, trying to put it in the rearview mirror, but kind of always kind of seeing that maybe it's not going to go away or ever be where we'd like it to be, at least in the near future. But with that, let's continue to do what we do best, meet challenges like that and those in the city and beyond as a collective team. At the end of the day, making the right decisions for now and for the future. I end by saying it is with great thanks and appreciation and humility that I appreciate your support continuing as your mayor and working with these great elected officials to make this a better and better and better city for all of us. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Mayor. I do want to echo Mayor's comments regarding Councilwoman Yvette Brantley, and at this time, I want to ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence. In her memory, this program today is honoring her memory and it's towards her lifelong work that she did, not only as a single, a councilwoman, but also as a private citizen in her work through DCF, helping better the pathway for children, for families. So please join me in a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you. All right. Well, this is what we're all here for. We're all here tonight to witness and recognize the administering of the oath of office for the recently elected officials. And we begin today with the city sheriffs, starting with Rich Paletto, oath administered by his son Anthony Paletto. Go forward.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Do you, Richard Michael Paletto Jr., having been elected to the office of City Sheriff of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations, all right. Congratulations, all right. All right, next, Mr. Mitch Robles, oath administered by State Senator Dennis Bradley.
Thank you very much. No, I think I have a copy here, John. Thank you. Get up to John Torres, doing a great job. Give it up to John Torres, you're doing a great job. Come on now. This is victory time. Do you, Mitch Robles, having been elected to the office of City Sheriff of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, and judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I will.
Here we go. Way to go.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And good job. All right. Next sheriff in town, Stephen Nelson, who oath will be administered by Reverend David Miller. And Steve's wife, Thor Nelson, will hold the Bible?
At the city of Bridgeport, the oath of office, do you, Brother Steve Nelson, you have been elected to the office of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you have faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and the best of your skills, wisdom, judgment, and the ability to further that you will support and the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
Next sheriff, Michael Moretti, oath administered by the Honorable Judge Eddie Rodriguez.
The oath concludes with, "So long as you continue in said office." And I say that because this is the most senior sheriff in the city of Bridgeport. He served forty years and he's now commencing his final two years for a total of forty-two years, the good Lord willing. Do you, Michael Moretti, having been elected to the office of City Sheriff of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I will.
All right. Our next sheriff is Enrique Rick Torres, oath administered by Deputy City Attorney John Okay, that's all right, John, you could come up because we have with us Mike Garrett, the next sheriff, who you will be administering the oath to. Mike Garrett? Oh, they're not here, okay. They missed the bus. All right. So let's give a round of applause to the city of Bridgeport sheriffs. Now we're going to recognize the city of Bridgeport Board of Education members, starting with Erica Castillo, oath administered by Pastor Michael Buckley, and Erica's dad, Robert Castillo, will be holding the Bible.
Do you, Erica Castillo, having been elected to the board of education in the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
Okay. That's a proud father right there, yeah? I love that. All right. The next board member for the board of education is Michael Macaron, oath administered by Deputy City Attorney John Bohannon. John, you're going to get your chance now. You're going to get your chance. Come on.
Do you, Michael Macaron, having been elected to the office of Board of Education for the city of Bridgeport, Connecticut, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute and discharge the duties of said office according to law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support and uphold the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Connecticut? So help you God or upon penalty of perjury. Congratulations.
Our next newly-elected board of education member is Attorney Christine Baptiste Perez, oath administered by Latonya Langley.
Hi, my name is Attorney Latonya Langley, and I'm honored to deliver this oath to Attorney Christine Baptiste Perez. Do you, Christine Baptiste Perez, having been elected to the office of the Board of Education of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations. Our next member will be John Weldon, the oath to minister by City Attorney John Bohannon, and John's wife, Geneva Weldon, will be holding the Bible.
Do you, John R. Weldon, having been elected to the office of Board of Education for the city of Bridgeport, Connecticut solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute and discharge the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support and uphold the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Connecticut, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Congratulations.
Alright. Our last member of the Board of Education is Joseph Saklovic, oath to minister by Pastor Rhonda Taylor. That's what I'm talking about, Joseph bringing his own Bible. That's what I'm talking about. He's ready.
Do you, Joseph Savakovic, having been elected to the office of Board of Education of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office, so help you God?
I do.
Alright. That's our Board of Education members for the city of Bridgeport. How about a hand for them? Alright. Alright. Now we recognize the City Council for the city of Bridgeport, starting with the 130th District, Matthew McCarthy, oath to minister by State Rep. Stephen Stasram.
Raise your right hand. Do you, Matthew C. McCarthy, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Alright, Steve, don't move. Alright. Also from the 130th District, Scott Burns, and Steve will administer his oath.
If you could raise your right hand, Scott. Do you, Scott Burns, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Alright, from the 131st District, newly elected Tyler Mack, oath to minister by State Senator Martin Luther. That's right. Eastern Connecticut State University. Yeah, that's it. This is my daughter's great class, college classmate right here. Congratulations. Alright. Oh, there you go. Okay. Coetti Francois will hold the Bible. Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, it's a great honor and pleasure to be here this evening to witness the oath taking for a new term of the City Council for the city of Bridgeport, for the Board of Ed, for the city sheriffs, because especially with the City Council, that is the level of government of representation closest to the people. There is the City Councils, there are state representatives, state senators, members of the US House of Representatives, members of the US Senate, but it is the City Council that is the first direct level of contact with people, and the ones who are really on the outposts of democracy and their performance reverberates for everyone else. And I'd also like to acknowledge two of my Senate colleagues who are here. Mentioned earlier, Senator Matt Lesser of the 9th District and Senator Will Haskell of the 26th District. Now it gives me the greatest pleasure to administer the oath of office to an extraordinary young man who is doing such a superb job at the Capitol as my legislative aide, and that is Tyler Mack. Please raise your right hand, Tyler. Do you, Tyler Mack, having been elected to the office of the City Council of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office, so help you God?
I do!
That's what I'm talking about. A little excitement out there. I like that. I like that. Alright. The next gentleman, who I've had the pleasure of knowing, and it's a repeater here, George Cruz Senior, and the oath will be administered by Mitch Robles. That's what I'm talking about. I love when people bring their own Bible. Way to go, Georgie. Oh, Kara will be holding the Bible?
Raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Do you, George Cruz, having been elected to the office of the City Council of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut as long as you continue in said position, so help you God?
Absolutely, I do.
Congratulations.
Alright. Now we know who's got the little swag in the council. It's 131st, huh? Wow. Alright, we'll see. We're gonna hear from more here. Alright. From the 132nd District, Marcus Brown with the oath administered by Thomas Collette. At this time, we also ask if there's any member from Yvette Brantley's family to please join Marcus here on stage. If there's anyone from the Brantley family? If you'd be kind. Alright, great.
Councilman, raise your right hand. Do you, Marcus Brown, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office, so help you God?
I will.
I'm gonna introduce Marcus here for a second to say some words.
Thank you for giving me this time. I know it's tough for the family especially, but my council partner, Mary Yvette Brantley, was not just a council partner, but really a good friend. We called her Auntie Leroy most of the time because that's what she called us, and she's gonna be missed, and I know her shoes won't be able to be filled, but we're gonna do our best to make sure that we deliver the same service to our constituents that we have in the past. So at this time, if you'll indulge me, we're gonna have a slideshow in Yvette's honor, so please enjoy.
I'm just gonna, I know you're not prepared, but I, this is Gwen Brantley, her niece, and very close to her aunt, and I had a conversation with Gwen this week, and she's committed to continue to keep Yvette's legacy alive, and I think all the families doing that as well, and they're committed to doing that through all her work. But can you say a few words? No? Well, thank you. On behalf of the Brantley family, I will tell you this. Not only Senator Penn is up there with her, but also State Rep. Sico Santiago, all there hugging, and all her sisters and all the family members, and we're here with you, okay? Go, Brantley family know that we're here with you, okay? Oh, she wants to say, alright, what's her name? Linda. Alright, Linda.
That's a wonderful tribute, you guys. I mean, you guys have really turned out in support of us, but I don't know how many members of the 132nd District are here, but know that my sister loved you, and you were her first thought in the morning and your last thought at night, and I know that because she called me practically every night with a constituent issue or something like that. So I do hope that her replacement will be just as dedicated, and she was disregarding anything that was ever said, dedicated to her community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. How we follow that, huh? Alright. Okay, the 133rd District. Let's see if we could bring back the energy. Wow, that was awesome. Awesome, awesome. Akin Boyd, oath to minister by Donna Stewart Eagles. That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Do you, Akin Juman Boyd, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office, so help you God?
I do.
Alright. That's what I'm talking about. 133rd District, Jeanette Heron, oath to minister by Gina Mojero. Alright, that's what I'm talking about. Somebody scream.
Do you, Jeanette Heron, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability, and further that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. All right, we're moving on to the 134th District. Michelle Lyons, Oath to Minister by Tom McCarthy.
Do you, Michelle Lyons, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I will, in honor of God, my family, and my constituents, and remnants of Sheriff Dennis Sinto, and I love you, Yvette Brantley. Thank you.
All right. I'm scolding Tom. How dare I? All right. All right, our next councilwoman is from the 134th. She is the longest-serving councilwoman. She is in her 10th term, Amy Marie Vizal Panichia.
Do you, Amy Marie Vizal Panichia, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I will. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on up to the 135th District. Mary McBride Lee, Oath to Minister by Attorney Edwin Farrell.
Do you, Mary A. McBride Lee, having been elected to the office of the City Council for the city of Bridgeport, Connecticut, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute and discharge the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support and uphold the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Connecticut? So help you God or upon penalty of perjury.
Congratulations. From the 135th District, Rosalina Roman Christie, Oath to Ministered by Pablo Ortiz. All right, and Chris Ortiz is holding the Bible.
First, I want to say, Mom, we're very proud of you. We're honored to be your children, and we know that you're gonna do great things. Now, do you, Rosalina Roman Christie, having been elected to the office of the Council of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
We love you, Mike. Congratulations.
Pablo Carlos, what a moment. Our proud sons here. Awesome. How about a hand for them? Nice. Very nice. Okay, and the 136th District, Avalino Silva, Oath to Ministered by Wanda Jeter Pataki. I hope I didn't mess that up, Wanda. Did I do it? My God.
Good job.
Do you, Avalino Silva, having been elected to the office of City Council, 136th District of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God. Congratulations.
All right. And from the 136th District, Alfredo Castillo.
My man.
He is looking sharp. Nice job.
That's my district leader.
Do you, Alfredo Castillo, having been elected to the office of City Council, 136th District of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duty of said office according to the law and to the best of your skills, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you, Wanda. And for those fans that want pictures and autographs from Wanda, she'll be in the back for $5 each one, all right? My God. All right. All right, have a little fun here. 137th District. Starting with the City Council President, Ms. Idi Nieves. Oath administered by Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysiewicz.
Well, good evening, Bridgeport. It is such an honor to be with all of you on this great night to celebrate democracy in this beautiful city. The governor and I want to convey to Councilwoman Brantley's family our condolences because for decades, she was a compassionate and fierce advocate and public servant. She was a woman of style and grace and integrity who put everyone else above herself, and she dedicated so much time and energy to the city of Bridgeport. She exemplified everything that is great about this city and its people. A round of applause for her and her beautiful family. And so today, we have the opportunity to celebrate the great people behind me who have taken this very courageous step to run for public office and to serve. And that takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there. Some are new to this elected process, and some knew what they were getting into and did it anyway. God bless them. And I just want to say a word about the people who have stepped up because they are a smart, competent, and diverse group of people of every age, gender, religion, and point of view. And let me just say, because I do run the Governor's Council on Women and Girls, if my math is correct, the majority of those who are taking public office today are women. A round of applause for these amazing women. And gentlemen, we applaud you too. You are incredible. But... So with that, I think that there is no better person to represent the promise of diverse representation in this beautiful city but Council President Idi Nieves, who made history as Bridgeport's first Latina president in 2015. And with this incredible amount of federal funding that is coming to our state, and in particular to Bridgeport, we know Idi has all of the right priorities as do her counterparts on the Council and the Board of Education. This will be transformative for the people of Bridgeport. And Idi, let me just say that the governor and I look forward to continuing to work with you and all of the representatives on the Board of Ed and the Council. We know that you are gonna do an incredible job. And I'll just say that public service during a pandemic is a remarkable act. And to the Board of Ed officials who are just sworn in, you have the future literally in your hands. And you are gonna have the opportunity to keep our future safe and our children safe because we know that you believe in science and vaccinations, and you put the safety of our children first. So thank you so much for that. So with that, I am so delighted to bring forward the amazing Idi Nieves and give her the oath of office. All right. There's a lot of microphones up here. Okay. All right. So do you, Idi Nieves, having been elected to the office of the City Council of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to law with the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
All right. And by the way, I forgot to mention, Josue George, Bridgeport Caribe Youth Leaders alumni was holding the Bible. Good job, man. Shout out to Caribe there. All right. Also, welcome from the 137th District, Maria Valle, accompanied by her two daughters, Rita Marie Valle Shastri, who will minister the oath, and Lysa Valle, who will hold the Bible. Ladies? This is what the lieutenant governor was talking about. Women power now.
Do you, Maria Ines Valle, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
There you go. Hey, we have two proud sons. We got two proud daughters here of her mom. How about a hand for the Vizes? All right, we're moving on up to the 138th District. Michelle Small, Oath to Minister by Pastor Willie Lee Johnson. And Joe Small Jr. will be holding, her son will be holding the Bible.
Do you, Michelle Small, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
All right, also from the 138th District, Maria Pereira, Oath to Minister by the Honorable Christopher Caruso.
As my lovely daughter comes up to join me, I'll be taking the oath on the city charter because I think at least one elected official should. And I'd like to thank, we have a number of family members, friends, Michelle and I, constituents, and volunteers here tonight. We want to thank you for your support. The only endorsement that Michelle and I felt was important was the endorsement of the residents and voters of the 138th District. We asked for that endorsement. You delivered it to us overwhelmingly in landslide victories in the primary and the general election. We want to thank you for entrusting your precious vote to us. Know that Michelle and I will always stand with you.
Maria, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you, Maria Pereira, having been elected by the people of the 138th City Council District to serve as the councilwoman in the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
Absolutely.
All right. Congratulations. All right, we're moving on up to the last district. How about a hand for the last district? The 139th District, Wanda Simmons, Oath to Ministered by Mary Louise Bruce. We have a sub. We have a sub. Tom called that.
Do you, Wanda Simmons, having been elected to the office of City Council of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of said office according to the law? And that to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in said office? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. All right. Last but not least, Mr. Ernest Newton II, oath administered by Scott Wilderman. Ernest's brother Timothy will be holding the Bible.
Do you, Ernest E. Newton II, having been elected to the office of City Council, 139th District of the city of Bridgeport, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially execute the duties of the said office according to the law and to the best of your skill, wisdom, judgment, and ability? And further, that you will support the Constitution of the state of Connecticut so long as you continue in the said office? So help you God.
I do.
Let's give a loud ovation to the City Council members of the city of Bridgeport. Well, we have a special treat. Do I have Maureen Hamel? Or am I going to, oh, Marie's here. Marie from the Klein is going to introduce our next video presentation.
We're going to present a video from the Keanan Theater Arts students. And I just want to give you a little background. Couple of years ago, we were doing West Side Story. And we talked to the kids. We want them to think, not just be on their phones and computers. And I said to them, what do you want in your life? And so the next day, a young eighth grader named Mula Kalala came in. And she's been here for two years from Africa. And she handed me this piece of paper. And these are her words that you're going to hear. This is what our children want. This is why I teach. This is why they serve. And this is why I have great faith in our children and for our future. Ladies and gentlemen, the Klein Theater Arts students.
In this world we live in, we're all human beings, but we ain't seen the same way. Why judge me because of my beliefs, my race, my culture, or my sexuality? When at the end of the day, we're all created by the same God. We could either live in this world as it is or we can each take a step and make it a better place for all of us. A world where I get to be myself without being judged by my skin color. Where the same laws that applies to you applies to me as well. So we can build walls to separate us even further or we can create peace, freedom, love, unity, acceptance, and equality for our futures and death of our children.
In this world we live in, we're all human beings. But the world doesn't think we're the same. Why judge me because of my beliefs, my race? At the end of the day, we are all the same. Wanting freedom, peace, love, and equality. Where all the laws apply to you also work for me. We can build those walls or we can create freedom, peace, acceptance, and equality.
Beautiful. How about a hand for the Klein Theater Arts staff and students performing somewhere? All right. We welcome back Reverend David Miller for the benefiction of what we call the blessing or in Spanish, la bendición. And you know what? We can never have too many of them, right? So Reverend Miller?
Eyes have not seen, ears have not heard, nor has it entered into the hearts of men the things that God will do for those that love Him. We should lift up our heads and enjoy the gospel word that comes to us. We've been blessed tremendously here this evening, celebrating the joy of leadership. It's not always how you start out in life. It's not how you end up. But we've ended up coming close to this day where we've really rejoiced this evening. And that's why we can give God all the praise and all the glory. And unfortunately, there are thousands, but a thousand are not experiencing a good night such as this evening that has happened here. But we realize we never knew when we'd leave at home for the last time. And so we thank God for the mayor of Bridgeport. We thank God for the governor. We thank God for the elected officials. We thank God for those who are making a way for others to move up the ladder. It's just good to be thankful to be thankful. And so we end this program this evening with the attitude that we've truly been blessed. We praise God who wanted to bless everyone in this building. We pray, God, that you would bless your children. We pray for the fire department. We pray for the police department. We pray for the elected officials. We pray for the educators. We know God is going to take a whole lot to bring us back to where we don't want to go. But it's going to take a lot to move forward. But we thank you, Father God, for this coming together and for the city of Bridgeport. We thank you for all the educators. We thank you because we love you. This is your servant's prayer, that you would bless every person in this in this service this evening. Bless their children. Bless their children's children. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Can you say amen?
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Miller. We're at the end of the swearing-in ceremony. You know, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this time to, first of all, congratulate all the newly elected officials. How about one more hand for them? And remind them that we are living in a world where there's much polarization that divides us because we think one way and it's not the right way according to others. And we do things and it's not to their level of comfort, but they feel it's the wrong way. But I will say this is that we need to remember that we're here for one reason, and that's to serve others. And that's what public service is all about. Serving those who need us. And with that said, I say this to all of us here for this great city of Bridgeport, that we must do better and be better for the betterment of everyone in the city of Bridgeport. I thank you for being great guests. Give yourself a round of applause. And wish everyone a happy holidays and many blessings. And please, stay safe. Please stay safe and stay seated as the Bridgeport Police Honor Guard will lead the elected official onstage towards the foyer where you can meet with them. Thank you. God bless. Good night. We need some music, right? Anybody want to sing? I can't seem to save my life. All I know is how to talk. Hey, how about a hand for them? Keep clapping for them. Come on now, this is awesome. Nice. There you go. Keep it up. Yeah. They don't want to leave. All right. Good night, everyone. Safe trip.